Call to order, please. Everyone, please rise for the flag salute. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel.
Here.
Commissioner Langria.
Here.
Mayor Holtzman.
Here.
This is the August 27th, 2020 Venice City Commission meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. We don't have any presentations this evening, but just a couple of announcements. First, our concert for Saturday evening has been moved to Sunday evening. These are the concert series behind the library because of the impending weather remnants of Hurricane Laura. Will be passing through our region on Saturday. We're going to move the concert to Sunday with the food trucks and crafters be there about five o'clock starting up with the Flins, an Irish band playing at six, and the Burnsideers, a reggae band with a recurring appearance at 8:00 a.m., 8:00 p.m. Also like to make a statement from, from the heart, really. A friend, elected official from Brigantine, passed away this past week, Andy Simpson. He was battling an illness for a long time, for several months. He passed away on Monday morning. He was elected as mayor in 2019 after term as deputy mayor, Phil Gunther, and became, after he was deputy mayor under Phil Gunther. Andy was certainly will be missed by his family and many friends and residents of Brigantine. He was a developer, businessman, community volunteer for many years on the island. He's a tough businessman, also had a huge heart. He helped many residents of Brigantine without looking for acknowledgement. I met Andy many years ago. I lived on the island, enjoyed his dry humor, his ability to look at a situation from a different perspective. Ed and I talked about that just this week. He will be missed by many, and I would ask for a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you. Thank you. Will be missed, Andy. Okay. Don't have any department heads, but we have our capital discussion tonight. We want to do that first, right? Want to go into that during discussion or workshop, correct? So who wants to start?
Want me to start? I'll start.
Please, Al.
All right. Well, first off, I'd like to go over the existing projects that we have and what's completed, what's not completed. And basically, what we have is there are certain projects that are completed and there's funds left in them. What I would like to do is cancel those balances and reappropriate them for our new debt. So it's, we don't have to issue debt for that. And approximately, I have about $1.2 million I can cancel and reappropriate. The budget sheets that I sent over to you, the second sheets I sent over with the old ordinances on them, they have the projects that we are going to keep, which the majority is like the beach replenishment that we have to keep. Some of the older ordinances that when I spoke to Ed Stinson that we're going to keep. And, but some balances, he said that we can cancel and reappropriate. The department heads themselves get to give you a better idea as far as ongoing projects. There are certain projects you're still ongoing as far as equipment, road repairs and things like that that were always going to be going, and I'm not canceling those. But for instance, the firehouse number two is totally done. It's obsolete, but there's still a million dollars left. I'm going to reappropriate that into the New Year's budget.
Okay.
Al, are there any of these four, any of these documents you want me to put up on the screen?
No, we're good.
No, we're fine for now.
Okay. Just let me know.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
So it's a rebound. We can kind of prioritize what's left.
I mean, some of this, there's some balances in here since the early 2000s, 1990s that I would like to cancel and reappropriate.
Yeah.
So, but that way we don't have to fund it.
You've been doing that since you got here, Al.
Yeah. So that way we don't have to fund it, though.
Right.
You know, and then we don't have to have new debt.
Right.
For, this is at.
Hard copies what he gave you.
Yeah.
And I also have, this is after consultation too with Leon Costello, our auditor. I met with him on Monday and we went over all these instances with the existing debt and the new debt that we're going to, I'm going to propose here today. The, I have all the requests from the departments as far as what new projects they were, they're interested in and moving forward with. That was the Excel spreadsheet I handed to everyone. With this existing plan right now, again, after consultation with Leon, this would be a zero tax increase for any of these, for the total of these items. I even have a couple. I have room to spare, is what I'm saying. Which will not increase it. After speaking with Leon, he told me that for every $92,000, for every million dollars of debt, it would be a $92,000 increase in the next year. But that is offset by what we have in reserve and things like that. So it would be a net, I would have to go up to almost $8 million to see a tax increase. And this, what I'm requesting here is like 4.3 million.
For next year.
For next year, an ordinance. For this year, the setup for next year.
Right.
The items that are listed are, I got from each department, police, public works, fire department and beach patrol. They're all listed there. And the total, the request is $5.8 million. Whoever, remember I'm offsetting the 1.2 million, so it would only be 4.5 million actually going out to debt. There's also a 5% down payment requirement of 226,000. But we have 600,000 in capital improvement fund as it is. I don't want to be using almost a third of that for the down payment. This excludes any grants that we get. This is not including any grants. So this would be the debt without any grants. Anything with, as far as NDOT is concerned, is factored into this. This is strictly just what we would use to go out for projects. Also with the grants, a lot of them are self-liquidating, meaning that if we, if we get $300,000 for a DOT grant and we only spend 280, again, I don't have to raise any money funds for that.
Okay.
Okay. That's really what I have to talk about as far as capital goes. If there's any questions or anything you want me to go over, we're happy to do it. The utility, the utility capital as well, that, again, I still have room to spare when we were as Leon. That will not affect anything as far as utility goes. As far as the debt that we have already issued, we do have some big debts coming off, school debt. That's coming off at the end of 2020, which does free up some, gives us some room as well. And that's another reason why there is no tax increase. We do have debt coming off. Okay. The one thing Leon wanted me to go over with you is in utility is contemplation of the rate of a rate increase in utility. That last year, we took a million dollars out of fund balance in our utility. Said that's starting to replenish now, and we have, the utility rates haven't been modified since 2015. And he said every three or four years, we really should evaluate that. And he gave me his suggestions and I forward that to you. Something to consider for another meeting, but it has nothing really related to do with capital for the debt, but it's something that should, needs to be addressed now. Also, if it's done now, that, and we could get it in by the end of the year, that will be less pain in next year, according to, you know, so that's.
On the utility side.
On the utility side. But like I said, I gave you what, what we see is necessary. And also remember to keep taxes down, we're using utility money to pay the current fund.
Right.
And that's where, that's why it's starting to replenish as far as the fund balance is going.
Has he made any suggestions about increase?
Yes, he did. And I gave that to you.
It's in there.
Yeah, it's in there. It was in the letter that I sent with the capital. What he's requesting to make up the difference. And, you know, like I said, we gave like $400,000 to the current fund, you know, last.
Funds positions that are shared with utilities.
No, this is, this is just revenue that we're giving surplus from utility into as a contribution to the current fund. You know, that increased to, it was like 200,000 a few years ago and it went up to like 400,000. So again, that keeps the taxes down, but in utilities, it's fine the way it is, but it's, it's taking the pain of that.
Right.
And it's been five years since that's been going on. So.
Almost an undue share of it.
Exactly. That, it's not planned into the plans, so.
Okay. And when, and just to clarify, when you say zero increase in taxes, you're talking about the specific section in the bond and not overall, their still salary?
Right. I mean, I'm just talking about the, the issue is the debt will not affect our tax rate.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Right. Because of debt coming off.
There's other things that may or may not, but.
Yes.
The issues of debt.
Yes, unforeseen things, other projects that are within the current, I can't account for. The one thing I will say, the revenues are excellent now, so that's going to hopefully not keep us, you know, make, lack of revenue is not going to make us increase elsewhere or fund balance.
Excellent in comparison to previous years, you're saying, or?
Right, excellent, because it did, yes, it's better than it was. Yeah, the last, last two years has been going up. I'm talking about other miscellaneous revenues other than taxes.
Yeah, we have the report from our pier and the beach badges that have shown an increase each year.
Right. It have increased every year since 2015.
Right.
And we budgeted like 260,000. We, we, we over-received that 300.
315?
Yes, 315.
313, yeah.
Yeah, 313 as of today, that number is. And then fishing pier, same thing, the budget, we exceeded the budget.
To a lesser degree, but still.
Right, but it's, anything that's over the amount we budget goes to surplus, which is good because then that's available for budgeting next year.
Right. Yeah, what's odd, look, I don't want to say funny, but odd to look at. You know, the pier didn't open until the end of June.
Right.
And we were a thousand dollars ahead of what we did all of last year.
Exactly. It may speak to the fact that there's just not much to do in the country.
True. I'm going to say it's the design of that building up there.
Yeah, it might be that.
It's certainly drawing more attention.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
But, so what I would just ask is the commissioners to do is just look at your, you took for the utility rates and the items that were listed on capital. Then I would do an ordinance to issue the, this, these, these projects per your approval and, and get that going for that.
Okay.
If there's any projects that you see is unnecessary, you know, that's what, you know, you could tell me and I will eliminate it. You know, or anything that you suggest that we would like to see. I know that Ed can elaborate on, he got new figures in today on beach replenishment. So that would have to be modified as well.
Yeah. And part of that, you saw my email earlier today, or I think the reason why it's so much higher this year is because when they did it previously, they covered the amount of sand being put in to rebuild the dunes and a lot of the erosion between, I'll say Richards and Armagh Gate border. Now, this year, we have to pay for that. Right, as a share, right.
Another item that I was thinking about putting in is, again, all this would not change radically. I would eliminate something to make up the difference is, and I said this to you, is a, there's a fleet management program for our vehicles where we don't, we, it'll automatically, we'll know when to renew the vehicles and we'll have a company that would help me manage that instead of piecemealing it, somebody's going out and buying a.
Is that all of our vehicles, all through PD, fire department?
Yes.
Not the engines and things, I would imagine, not. Staff cars, yeah.
Yes.
And then the public works trucks.
Not apparatus. Right, right. So like, instead of.
Tim got a new word. He's used apparatus. There we go.
Sayin'.
Nicely done. But this would eliminate a lot of the, you know, we'd have a concrete plan, when to retire vehicles, when to, and then we can actually.
Usually when the wheels fall off is when we shut them down in public works.
Right.
Beach patrol gets them. We bolt them back on, put a, put a coat of paint on them and, and use them for another five or 10 years.
Yeah.
Well, that's the ambulance, right? It looks good.
No question.
Yeah.
Right. So like after four or five years, we could return the vehicle and get another vehicle with this plan. You know, so instead of beating into the ground, then we get, we have a new vehicle set up and we get some value out of the car, the car we're returning in.
Okay.
So that, that, it's an, it's a, it's an idea, it's a plan. I wanted to bring it to everybody first before acting on it or anything like that. I just want to make sure that you're aware that it exists. Atlantic County uses this company that, that gave me the proposal, the county government, and Cape May County uses them. So our, obviously our fleet's a lot smaller than theirs, but it's the same principle applies.
In, in the documentation you gave me, I haven't had a chance to review it yet.
Yes.
Does it show a cost benefit analysis on it?
Yes.
So it shows we can save money by doing this.
About approximately $267,000.
A year?
I think through the life.
Okay.
But.
Same, that's.
Yeah.
But on top of that, it sounds like there, this is, there's maintenance involved. Minor maintenance will also be included in there?
Yeah, they would, they would do any, the maintenance to it, yes.
From my point of view, we have such a, we're always chasing down these minor oil changes, flats, things like that.
Yeah.
Headlights, things like that, to take that off of the primary, you know, and leave our staff to the primary tasks, not the types of maintenance that they're chasing down.
Right.
Benefit to that.
Yeah.
Right, if you.
And we could spend our time on the equipment we have, the apparatus that public works, to steal a phrase from Mr. Kribel.
And they, now you're just jealous.
I am.
Also, they, they would, the company said they'd be more willing to come to a county committee meeting, a commissioner meeting and present to you if you.
I'd like, I'm curious. Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Beth, you okay with that?
Yes. Matter of fact, I, that program works very well because I deal with it. I mean, and Tim actually brought up what I was going to ask to make sure we were included. They let us know, like for my individual department, when maintenance is due, things like that, even registration. So it, it does work very well.
Good.
Okay, so.
Great.
In regards to the ordinance for new capital, when would you like to do that so that they know, you know, their timetable for reviewing?
Well, I could, I'll make it up anytime. It's just a template for them to see. You know.
When do you think?
I like to do it this year, for two meetings and then, you know. Yeah, I would like to do it September or October.
Maybe we could do it the second meeting in September and then into October.
Be a little time.
Give us a little time to go through. There's a lot of things to go through when those, we're really just getting them the last day or so.
Right, right. I, I, like I said, this is just to introduce you to it. It's not to get a decision or anything.
And Ed, I don't want to put you on the spot, but is there, can you give us an update over the top, you know, very high level update on what we've done from the previous bond? Do you have a listing of that? You can give it to us next week or something, or?
That's, that's, I can give you a very, off the top of my head where.
Okay. Good.
Most things, but a more detailed report I would provide.
Yeah, I think that'd be nice to see what we've completed.
Right.
Out of the previous bond, capital improvements, and then know what we got coming forward. That would be helpful, I think.
So basically, the bonds we're working on personally, Al, is the 2017 bond appropriations that I've approved. And most of them were taken our way through those projects. So one, one of that list that I provided today, the government will be able to see a fair amount of the projects that I think we've completed that come from that, those 2017 bond ordinances. And we are still working with, I think, roughly over hundreds of standards that are not going to get way through the amount that was authorized. But some of that, at least one million of them, we're not going to do it, and now both reappropriate.
Right, from the firehouse, yeah.
So we would be getting down that way through exactly those series of ordinances. The earlier ordinances that Al referred to, there's some balances, small balances generally to projects that have been completed. But we have, with, with that, been working, taking some of those small balances to fund projects that were not anticipated, even in 2017, which is that popped up. So we've taken our way through the small balances, other projects that have been completed.
Excuse me. Commissioner Langria, Commissioner Kribel. I can't hear Ed, and Net just sent me a message. Can he go up to the microphone?
Thank you.
Thanks.
We were set up to do that. I should have asked Ed to do that. That's my fault.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry about that. So the, the projects that we're working on currently are mostly funded by the 2017 bond ordinances. And I've provided a report today that updates on most of those projects, some of, some of which have been completed. A lot are in the construction phase right now, and there's a few that are about to go out to bid. There are other bond ordinances that have balances that are older. And some of those, actually all of those, the authorized projects have been completed. And there are some that, that we are working with Al and recommending to reappropriate those balances. There's other small balances that we're asking to remain so that we can use as the need arises for those authorized purposes. For example, in the utility ordinance, we have several bonds that have authorized purchasing of meters, purchasing of fire hydrants, water main improvements or sanitary sewer main improvements. There's projects that have been completed, but there are balances and we use them all the time to fund surprises that come up that, that need to be addressed. But I will give you, I can give you a more detailed report on the status of the 17 projects.
I think this does it. I think what you gave tonight kind of does that.
Okay.
Was kind of leading into this. That's what I was asking.
Got you.
Ed and Al did go through every, every project.
Correct.
There's a copy of that here.
Yes.
Okay.
Identifies the detail behind.
I can see how small that text is. I'm not going to be able to read that.
No, well, it, it's, it's, looks worse than it is. One's utility and one's capital. Oh, yeah.
Wait, do I have this ready?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I did.
Abbreviated budget amount, status.
Right. Yeah, that's what I was just looking on online. Yeah.
Yeah, I have this ready.
Yeah. And just so, you know, like if you look at the middle number of the count numbers, that's, represents the year.
Oh, okay.
So if you look at the number.
I think, I think I noticed that, yes.
Yeah, CO4, it's general capital, then the next number is the year of the ordinance.
Got you.
Right.
Oh, two, zero, zero is 2000.
Two and et cetera. Just so you get an idea how, what, what we're talking about.
Okay.
And same with the utility, CO6 and then the number.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Ed, did you have anything else you need to talk about? Ernie, do you have anything besides what Ed mentioned, or you're here for something else?
No, pretty much everything, everything he says about capital is all.
Okay, good. Chief, you have anything?
Well, I got those with Mary's. Utilizing the paperwork and the template that I was given by Mr. Stanley to establish a capital plan, the fire department put down our needs projected through 2025 and estimated a lot of the, basically their, their repairs, their upgrades and replacements for both equipment and some vehicles. And as Al brought up with the having a maintenance plan, that's where I am. And the biggest chunk of the capital request I have was replacement of a fire engine and upgrading through a serious rebuild to other existing fire engines to bring us into where we should be mechanically and have operating pieces of equipment. Because we have two engines that are running the line right now that if they were your children, will have already graduated college. The age of the vehicles are in their mid twenties. We've gotten the full lifespan of them as a frontline piece of equipment. We need a new frontline piece of equipment to replace that, to put them in reserve and get rid of one that is becoming a maintenance hanger queen, so to speak. It's costing more to keep it than it's worth. So we're looking to trade that in, upgrade to a new vehicle that'll keep the department for the next 25 years. We have some repairs and modifications at Station One in my capital. Basically, it's an upgrade to our existing bathroom so we can split it so we have a female and a male side since we have female, a female employee now with more perceived in the future as the testing process goes through. It's not acceptable to have one single bathroom and rotating people through with a sign on the door. We want to make sure we have two separate facilities that we're able to be used by all members without having any inconvenience of waiting till one person's done or the other person gets through, putting their gear away in the morning or whatnot. And that is basically the largest part of my capital requirements coming up. There's some tools and some upgrades on some medical equipment that have reached its lifespan. And again, as we get a little further into this, this timeframe, 2023, it's time to replace our third ambulance, which will be at that point 17 years old. And will no longer be rated by the state as an emergency vehicle.
That's the Trump, the E350 Trump.
Yes. And we, again, we get maximum yield out of those vehicles because it can't be used as an ambulance. Our last ambulance transferred over to the water department. Now it's their frontline water meter truck, correct, Ed? And they painted it up. It fits their needs with compartment, compartmentalization, open cab in the back for storage of equipment. And it's better than what they were riding around in before. So we try to take our vehicles while they still have some life and disseminate them out to the city departments that could use them. And that's really the ambulance, a staff SUV will replace one. It's a 2006. Which one of us drives a 2006 vehicle anymore? Because it costs too much money to maintain it.
Right.
That's where I am on my capital. I have a explanation of each need documented. I gave to the commissioners, the mayor, there's one in your mail slot. And available for any questions about anything that I requested. As, as for the old bond, that money that was out there, the department didn't have a lot on the books. But we pretty much exhausted everything that was there from the 2017. I went over line item by line with Al, and we were able to take most of that money and put it back into the system as, we're not going to need it.
Okay, good. Thank you. Chief, any questions from Tim, Mayor?
I reviewed this earlier today and everything, like you said, is line item, but there's no bad. I reviewed this earlier today, and everything, like you said, is line item, but, um, that there's no bad in this. It's all stuff that's required maintenance and required, um, updating for, to keep, uh, to keep the city safe in a lot of ways. It's very.
A lot of it is truly to meet the requirements of the NFPA standard for age of not only vehicles, but our hose, our air packs, and a rotational plan. So in fifteen years, when our air bottles have reached the end of their lifespan, we don't have to buy eighty new air bottles at once. The plan is to start buying eighty here, five years down the road.
Good.
It's a quick read, and you can see it's all justified. My question would be that this 2020 at one hundred and fourteen is built into your number.
Correct.
And we're looking at three, six thirty and twenty-one.
Right.
So we know.
Yeah, when I, when I wrote this, I, I didn't know what he wanted me to, I just put a 2020 was the year I was writing it.
Just saying, look at it with, you know, open eyes here. That's it.
Right, I mean.
This is covered in our non, uh, non-increasing capital number, but next year is a different story.
Well, yeah, and also, again, if, like I said, a lot of his, what he had in there was for the maintenance vehicles. If we get a maintenance plan, we'll know exactly what those numbers are instead of an estimate.
That's true.
You know, which is, this is what I'm trying to do.
Yeah.
And then we'll know exactly what we need to do in the future.
Fix costs, so it's.
Exactly.
Good.
In there, under my, uh, line item for apparatus refurbishment, I put down, oh, I believe the total was one twenty-five for sending out two engines for complete rebuild. That is from the ground up, new brakes, new chassis, everything's replaced, and then we'll get another ten or fifteen years out of those vehicles.
Great. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. Um, I think that's it with capital. Ray, you have anything to add? No? All right. So the following items are scheduled to, if you guys, do you need to be here for anything else?
I have two.
Okay.
There are two resolutions, I believe, on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, I can stay for, if there's any discussion you'd like.
What's Hampshire and what's the other one?
Hampshire, change order, drive, change order, and then there's a pipe repair behind Harvard Stormwater Pump Station. The outfall that goes through the bulkhead that.
Yes. We talked about that on Tuesday.
Yes, that's a thirty-six thousand dollar.
I can, if you want to, there's no need for you to stay. Chief?
Thank you.
Ernie, you got anything for us? All right, thank you. So the following items are scheduled for action, uh, this evening in the regular portion of our commission meeting. We'll, we'll adopt our minutes from August thirteenth at a regular meeting. We have no ordinance introductions. We have two public hearings on, on ordinance adoptions and ordinance adoptions. Twenty twenty dash zero one seven, ordinance to the city of Ventnor, County of Atlantic, amending chapter two fourteen, vehicles and traffic, part two, article thirteen, meter schedules. We'll have a public hearing on that. Any discussion, Tim? Ray, we're good? Uh, the second one will be twenty twenty dash zero one eight, which is amending chapter thirty-eight, police department deleting in its entirety section thirty-eight ten, deputy chief, Dakota City of Ventnor. When we go into resolutions, we will adopt these by consent, resolutions twenty twenty dash two seven three through two ninety-nine. First is resolution twenty twenty-two seventy-three, authorizing closing out of escrow accounts. That's for planning board, I'm guessing.
That's where the, uh, yeah, our escrow funds that their, the projects are over.
Right. Gotcha. There it is. Sorry, had to, had to pan down in my, uh.
You got two.
And then there's the next one, item two seventy-four is same thing, closing out escrow accounts. There's the next and third one, too. A lot of escrow accounts.
Cleaning up.
Yep, cleaning up a lot of stuff that, that gets back to, you know, once a project's done and they haven't expended those review fees, they go back to the resident.
He's been sitting here for years. That's what I'm trying to.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, like, some of it are, like, literally five dollars. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at some of these, two twenty, fifty dollars, one twenty, seven twenty. That's a big one.
Four cents?
Yeah.
Thirty-three cents?
Yeah, I mean, that's, um, that's why I had Sari go through all these and.
Oh.
Pull them.
Yeah, that, look at that.
Yeah, and it's, why keep the account open?
Right. It costs us more than keeping it open.
Exactly, so I'm trying to, and some of this funds goes, goes to the city.
Just ignore it.
The interest.
Does it? Okay.
Really, yeah.
All right.
So.
Um.
Alien on you.
Resolution two seventy-six approving the, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one liquor license renewal for Big A Property Holdings LLC. It's a pocket license. It's not operating right now. It's a renewal of a retail distribution license. You'll see a lot of these with, with the renewal time. Uh, two seventy-seven is the same. It's the renewal license for Ventnor City Liquors and Wines. Two seventy-eight is a resignation from Tom Hewitt. He was our peer master. Um, he went back to teaching. Uh, but we understand he's coming back next summer though, correct?
Yeah, as far as, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Going back to the school year.
Does he really have to resign if he's coming back?
I don't know.
No, he was coming back.
Oh, yeah. Did not.
We'll have to check that.
I will.
Yeah, I think Sue was gonna ask him.
Yeah.
If he was coming back or not, or just, he thought he was planned for.
Okay. Uh, resolution two seventy-nine is, um, this is what Mr. Stinson was talking about. He's awarding a contract for bulkhead sinkhole repair on Harvard Avenue and Fulton Avenue. It's along, uh, West Canal. The amount of thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to Pioneer Pipe LLC. Next is two eighty, resolution two eighty, authorizing temporary employment of Kristen McVeigh. That PD.
Of course.
Courts are, that's right.
I might be short-lived.
Okay, um. Resolution is two eighty-one, authorizing refund to Dominic Herrera. Who's that?
It was from a planning board application?
Yes. Um, you know what? I will kind of explain that a little bit. It came before the planning board, and it turned out they did not need the relief as we got into discussion. And, um, we, uh, we authorized that their, their application fee and their engineering review fees, escrow fees would be returned to them. And Roger, uh, McLaren was nice enough to kind of waive his, his couple hundred dollars fees that he would have gotten out of it, um, to return to them because they really shouldn't have had to come to the board. Resolution is two eighty-two is the amending the Ventnor City Municipal Budget by the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation from the state, New Jersey Municipal Alliance Grant, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the amount of three, three thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and sixty cents. The cash match and in-kind amount of the same totaling seven thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty cents. Good there?
Yes.
The next three, I think these are police officers, Tim?
I'm sorry, Al, that's a reduction, am I correct, from previous years?
Yeah, it's a reduction because of the, uh, the year being shortened by the, uh, uh, eight. So that, and this is the amount of the reduction.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Items, uh, let's see, we're on item K. Resolution two eighty-three is authorizing full-time employment for Dominic Montanaro. Uh, the next one, two eighty-four is authorizing full-time employment for Alec Fendrick. Tim, these are, um.
Police officers.
Special police officers being promoted to full-time?
Uh, no, these are new hires.
New hires. Okay.
Or, um.
Vacancies.
Vacancies, gotcha. But they were, they've been working for us part-time before, right?
No.
Yes.
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 Oh, that's what I thought, because I know, I've, I've met Blake.
Yes, number one is, uh, actually a Camden trained officer we're getting. He's resigning his position. Number two and three, Alec Fendrick and Blake Ballen. They are class twos. They are going to be, uh, put through a waiver academy, and they will be on the streets much quicker. Uh, and the fourth is Chelsea Burns, and she's in great shape. We look forward to her. She's gonna have to go through the full academy at Atlantic City Police Academy, Atlantic County Police Academy.
Chief, I hate to, I hate to do this, but the person resigning from Camden County, how long have they been there? Because then it gets into the issue where we have to reimburse them for training expenses.
Yeah, that's not on us because it's not, it's not what you think it is. He's not, he's on our list. He is on our list, and he's resigning his position. So anything that happens should fall on him, not us. He's been there for a couple of years now, so.
He has been in Camden County for a couple of years?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Believe me, we're all holding our breath on it. Doesn't mean they're not gonna do something. It just means, you know.
Chief, it's not, it's not an intergovernmental transfer. He.
No, it is not.
He's coming off of the civil service cert list, correct?
Yeah, understand that, that none of the officers that we got from Camden were, um, they resigned their position. They were all on our list. So it wasn't like we went and cherry picked them from Camden. That's not the case. That's not how we operate, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Worked for us.
Just the first one.
Fendrick and Ballen, two of them did. Fendrick and Ballen both worked for us.
Common, right.
Okay, we good?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution is two eighty-seven is approving twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one liquor license renewal for Fam Camp Inc., which is White Star Liquors. They've done a nice job renovating the inside of there. Have you been in there lately? They're, they're fixing it up. It looks nice. Doing a nice job. Um, two eighty-eight is a cancellation, grant fund receivable balances and reserve unappropriated balances. Al, can you go through that a little bit?
Yes, um, these are grants that have been, um, on the books since probably, I'd say, mid-two thousands mostly. Also, it's grants that, for instance, uh, we got an NGT DOT grant, and the project was, we got it awarded two hundred and fifty thousand, for instance. And the project's over, and we only spent two hundred, so there's fifty thousand left, so I'm canceling the balance that's left.
Okay.
Um, also, like, there's some grants that don't exist anymore that were still on the books, um, that I'm canceling and reserving. And again, this is all, I gave the list to our auditor before I submitted this, and he said, that's fine, the list I gave him.
Okay. Next item Q is resolutions two eighty-nine is the authorizing hiring of part-time school traffic guards. Should I read the names off or that? You can, right? Peggy Limow, Natalie Clark, Ronald Retherick, Joseph Ianello, Joseph LoSalo, and alternates, William Santiago and Adriana Torres. Those, in back to school. Uh, we have a resolution two ninety, authorizing a refund of tax overpayment. That is for. It's a hundred and, or eighteen hundred and fifty-six dollars, it looks like, Al.
Right, what happens is they mortgage company came, paid, and a title company paid at the same.
Gotcha. I think that happened to me once when I refinanced.
It happens, uh, occasionally, and it's, we just have to refund the, back to the title company, and not give it back to the person.
Yep. Uh, two ninety-one is also approving a liquor license renewal from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one for Jay Sitkatar LLC, Community Liquors. Looks like a couple more PD resolutions. Two ninety-two is appointing Hami Quinones as temporary police sergeant. Two ninety-three is Mark Supren as temporary police sergeant. Two ninety-four, Mario Lima as temporary police sergeant. We're all good there, Chief?
Um, yes, it's going to help us fill our new, uh, eight-hour shifts temporarily until we can get the manpower back up. At which time we'll move to twelve-hour shifts hopefully by the, uh, beginning of next year. So this is going to save us a bunch of overtime at a much lower rate, uh, cost for the city, so it's a, it's a win-win for us.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution is two ninety-five, authorizing refund of water and sewer overpayment. Kind of self-explanatory. Two ninety-six is authorizing a change order number one for the reconstruction of Hampshire Drive. Pull this one up, because this is a little, a little bit detailed. Ed was talking about that as well. So Hampshire Drive, we started out as a, I'm gonna say it was a paving and reconstruction project. Uh, we had sewer collapse in the middle of all that happening, uh, so we had to go out and redesign and add sanitary sewer, um, main and laterals going out. Uh, in the meantime, we also replaced all of the water service, services, right, Ernie?
That's correct.
Um, and then, right before we're getting ready to finish things up, we find a storm drain that was aluminum, corrugated aluminum pipe that is basically completely rotted out. So you don't want to pave a new road and have that underneath because you'll end up having sinkholes. So we're gonna, it's being designed now, and we'll go back out to bid and get that done as quickly as possible. Um, not out to bid, we're gonna add it to this contract. So we're gonna get that done and do the street correctly, so that is, uh. We awarded a five hundred and five thousand dollar contract. This would be a change order request of one hundred and twelve thousand. It's greater than the twenty percent of the contract, but we think there's gonna be some reduction in number of water service laterals that'll bring us under that twenty percent that we're allowed to go to, so we should be good with that. Hampshire will be a really nice street when it's finished, so. It's gonna have all new utilities, new pavement, new storm drain will be good. Two ninety-seven is refund of community building room rental and security fee, self-explanatory. Two ninety-eight, closing out of old escrows again. And the last resolution is two ninety-nine, couldn't get the three hundred, could we, Lisa? You know? Um, we went through the alphabet. It's gonna be a lot of signing next week. Approving twenty twenty, twenty-one liquor license renewal for Ventnor Spirits, which is Byright Liquors out at the plaza. All good there? Okay, we will have approval of bills and payroll. We'll have, um, any discussion items, Tim?
No, I think, not, not this week.
Okay. Mayor, do you have anything?
No, I do not. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, just a couple of things to, to discuss. Um, I had a phone call today with Congressman Van Drew. Representatives from the Department of Transportation, Atlantic City Councilman, um, Jesse Kurtz, and some representatives from Senator Brown's office with regard to West End Avenue, Wellington Avenue, and the flooding that happens there pretty much on a monthly basis. Congressman Van Drew had put this together, he coordinated the meeting. No one from the county was on the call, which was disappointing. Um, they must have missed the date or something because it's their road. So when the DOT found that out, they basically indicated that, look, you're gonna have to get the county involved and get them to come with a project. There's funding sources through the state and through the local municipal aid that we use a lot. We use that every year for projects. This project, well, nuts and bolts of it, what the DOT is doing right now is gonna fix that intersection. Fix might be a strong term. They're gonna do some repairs to that intersection so it won't flood as much. Basically, they're gonna build a bulkhead along that, uh, that waterway there that right as you come off Route forty, often you have, onto West End. That will help some of that flooding. It does not help, this is our evacuation route. It's our down-beach evacuation route. It's very important, and that's why I think Congressman Van Drew got involved. Um, Jesse was, was good in the meeting because he was trying to hold DOT's feet to the fire, and they kept saying, it's not our road. Our responsibility stops at, at the end of our right of way. So that was a little disappointing. But the congressman did say, look, we're gonna circle back, um, because anything that the county would do would have to tie into the state's work. And they have, you know, mechanisms for funding for it. There's three different funding sources they talked about, um, that the county can apply for, that we can apply for. And our money wouldn't be used at that location. We would do something down closer, you know, obviously in Ventnor, um, down closer to the plaza and as we come into, into our community. As we know, that street floods bad, um, so stay tuned. They're gonna reschedule another call and get the county. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna reach out to Freeholder, uh, Farmica, Freeholder Risley, uh, and those guys and talk to them, pardon me, about, you know. They, they've gotta start maintaining this road, make sure we have better access, uh, out of, out of the island. I did mention to the group that was on the phone call that the county has a plan, has a project, but that's for, um, handicap ramps at intersections and traffic control signals. Not, you know, elevating the street, so, um, I don't want to go do something or have the county, state, and municipalities do something that doesn't include, you know, at least managing for these, these traffic signals. You don't want to put them in.
Right.
And then if you elevate the street, have to do it again. So there's something that we'll have to coordinate. Ed was, mentioned the beach replenishment. Um, one of the things I'm gonna reach out to, and I spoke to Jim Ruttella, and we'll get the congressman on, on another phone call, this is not the appropriate time. Is to talk about, um, fixing the problem instead of just dumping sand in front of, you know, where it scallops out. And we have about a fifteen-block, twelve-block section that every two years is significantly eroded. The dune erodes, that's fine. That's what it's supposed to do. That's what it does at everywhere else. But for whatever reason, between that, for whatever reason, the reason is the two piers.
The piers.
Our pier and Margate's pier, it scallops out between those two. And that's what's costing us more money this year, is that scalping, um, because it's more volume, more sand. They will. They will probably, the plans I saw in the meetings that we've had, they will do very little north of the pier, east of the pier. It will be significant backfill or beachfill coming south.
Between, between the piers.
That bid went out, it was awarded to Great Lakes, which is the dredge you see out off Ocean City. So they will move that up here when they're finished there. Sometime, they really don't have a timeline on it, but in the fall. What's kind of interesting about it is one of our local Lanxie High School graduates, Ventnor resident, J.C. Craig, and she went to University of Florida to be a coastal engineer. She got a job right out of school with Great Lakes, and she will hopefully be on that project. So it's kind of neat, she, she was a sandy survivor, as they call them, her house was damaged and elevated. She, smart kid, you know, top of the class in AC, wanted to be a coastal engineer because of what happened to her and her family. So it was really, really neat to see that come around. And she's been working down in South Carolina for a while, based out of Chicago, but she's been working down there, she hopes to be assigned to this project, so, kind of neat.
Yeah, very.
That's kind of all I have for discussion. Well, I guess we'll go into our public portion, have a motion to open the public portion to discuss items that have been discussed so far this evening.
Motion to open the public portion.
Second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anybody wishes to speak, please let Mr. Pakinowski know, either by raising your hand in the in the Zoom meeting, no one's here live, but if you're on the Zoom call, please let us know that you want to ask a question.
Anybody from the public wish to speak? The person with the area code 6094572504, do you wish to speak on any of the items that are being discussed tonight?
Melvin, Jim?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Lipsky would like to speak.
Okay. Please state your name and address and have your questions for us, Jerry.
My, my apologies, I did not wish to speak, I, I'm thrilled with the meeting, please continue, sorry.
He doesn't wish to speak.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no more comments, Jim, nobody else?
No.
We'll close the public portion at this time. And do we do a motion for that?
A motion to close the public portion.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Closed, and we will close the, also a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting and open the regular portion.
Motion to close workshop and open our regular meeting.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So I'll call to order our regular meeting, Ventnor City Commission, August 27th. First item on the agenda is the approval of our regular meeting minutes from August 13th, motion please?
Motion approved minutes, August 13th, 2020.
Second to motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kriebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Abstained.
So we have no ordinance introductions, we have a public hearing on ordinance 2020-17. We have a motion to open the public hearing on that ordinance?
I make a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-017.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance, please make yourself known to Jim Pakinowski and we will take your questions.
Any members from the public wish to speak? It looks like you're good.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Sorry, motion to close public hearing.
Second, second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I need an order, a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-017?
Ordinance to adopt 2020-017.
Second motion.
Roll call, please, Lisa.
Commissioner Kriebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes.
Need a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-018, the Chapter 38 Police Department deleting its entirety, Section 3810.
Make a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-018.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a public hearing now open on this ordinance, anyone wishing to speak, please state your name and, or first make it known that you want to, you want to speak or ask a question, and please state your name.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? It looks like you're good.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Motion to close public hearing, ordinance 2020-018.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ask for a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-018?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-018.
Second motion.
Roll call, please, Lisa.
Commissioner Kriebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes.
And we have resolutions by consent from 202273 to 202299, motion please?
I make a motion to adopt resolutions by consent 2020-273 through 2020-299.
Second to motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kriebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes.
Al, could you give us our bills and payroll, please?
Uh, yes, the bill list for this meeting is $5,457,279.8. Majority of that is the county and school payments. And the payroll for this period is $608,708.8.
A motion to approve bills and payroll as stated by our CFO?
Motion to approve bills and payroll stated by our CFO.
Second motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kriebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes.
Okay. Announcement, safety report, anything, Tim?
Uh, we kind of covered it with with our Capitol today a little bit, but
Yep.
You know, the summer's winding down, but I think we're looking for a, probably an extended summer. We did have a little discussion of keeping more beaches open and keeping it within budget to have spread out a few more beaches this summer, so we'll, we'll post that once we come to a decision.
Good, I think that's a good idea, I think there's still people here, a lot of people are staying.
Right.
So. Just a couple of comments, and I missed stating at the beginning, the farmer's market on Fridays will be extended to end of September.
Another, yeah.
Been very successful, it's really well-run, we will be the only one that extends through September, I think, at least we're the first to do it anyway. We're the first to open, and we're going to be the last to, to close.
Yeah. Honey and Andy for handling it in a way that is socially distant and safe every time you go there and the, the vendors are selling out, but they're, but when you go there, you don't feel you're outdoors and it feels more safe and comfortable than you go into a grocery store.
I completely agree, we try and get there every week. Boomer needs his treats, so we have to get there for the dog vendors, but the, it's just, they're so, the volunteers are just so well organized there, you know, they've had rain events where they've delayed opening and it opened. They've even added to the concert nights, which I think is a plus.
Absolutely.
And it seems to be going really, really well. I think that's it, just beware that Saturday, we're, I mentioned it before, you know, we're going to have some heavy rain coming through the region. The concert, as I mentioned, I'll just mention that again, is being moved from Saturday to Sunday starting at 5:00 with the farmer's market, and then the concert starts at 6:00 with the Flins and 8:00 PM with Burnsideers. So we'll open it up to the public, have a motion to open the public, comment on anything this evening?
Motion to open to the public.
Second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have anybody there?
Anybody from the public wish to speak? Mr. Lipsky or the phone number, area code 6094572504, do you wish to speak on any items, have any questions or comments? I'm not seeing anything.
Okay, motion to close, please?
Motion to close public portion.
Second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
No executive section, session, Tim, correct? No executive session, correct. All right. Mayor, I forgot to ask you if you had any comments or reports or anything?
No, I think, well, other than, I, I think we had a surprisingly successful summer considering we're in the middle of a pandemic. I was, um, you know, beach badge revenue, I, I was fearing, we all knew the numbers in May, we were at a third from last year, so I was in somewhat of a panic, so the revenues coming in over the summer, especially for beach badges, because that's sort of, you know, my little thing that I watch constantly. And, and I think the outdoor dining, I think we, as, as the commission, we gave the businesses and Lance, you did all that legwork contacting every restaurant, and every time I drive anywhere in the city, I mean, they are just hopping, so that may be something we look at the ordinance, because I don't know how long we dated that for, and
We're going to do that in September.
Yeah, we're going to extend it in September, Mayor.
Great, great.
Already working on it, she's going to match the governor's language.
Great, so I just, I think overall, I'm pleasantly surprised that our summer looked the way it has. I think we were all a little nervous, and that's really about it, I just think, you know, I hope the restaurants, from what I could see, I think they did well, God willing, they'll continue to do well, and I know our beaches were very crowded, but hey, it's a beautiful piece of nature, so. That's it.
Good, thank you, I agree, the restaurants, I mean, there was a learning curve.
Yeah.
We had some bumps in the road, but I think I reached out to the ones that we were having some concerns with from a blocking the sidewalk standpoint, we met with them, or I called them. And they've, they've been pretty good, they've been trying to clean up a little more, that's a problem, it's windy, but
I think we need to get ahead of it for next year.
Yeah, I think
Have a little bit of like an after action and find out what works and what
Yeah, and I want to do, so other communities actually require applicants to get, you know, a permit and provide us insurance. We did that for the first time this year for ones that were not doing it in the past, so I think that's something we should keep on doing. Nominal fee, you know, a few, few dollars, just something to, to cover the cost of, of managing it.
Right, just to sort of memorialize.
Exactly, exactly. And, and make sure we have those, those insurance that covers us for anything in those, those areas.
Right, maybe we can use that session as a brainstorm.
Yeah.
Yeah, and are we going to, I mean, I know some restaurant, I'm sorry. I think some of the restaurants had, said they would love to continue it with, with or without COVID, have the, the extra outdoor seating ability, so I guess that's something that we, as the commission, will discuss throughout the year.
Sidewalks are fine, the parking lots are fine, I guess, because they've worked around the parking issue at, at one that's using her, her, you know, Annette's.
Which is very interesting when parking is such a hot topic.
Yeah, a lot of people are walking, a lot of people riding bikes. So it, it's, it's been good, I mean, you know, Cheryl has done a great job there, Red Room has done phenomenal with what they're doing after a couple early hiccups, like we said.
Yeah.
I don't think that, you know, Santuchis will be able to keep that in the street after this is over.
Overpower.
Yeah, and, and I think hopefully when this is over, they'll, they'll have seating inside, they won't need it.
Right.
You know, hopefully that comes sooner than later, that we'll be able to have some of these places open up inside. So it's been certainly a challenging summer, but, but I think for the most part, our residents have stepped up and, and rolled with those punches, it's inconvenient for everybody, but I think, you know, we had to keep these businesses in our community running. If we, if we didn't do something, we would have lost some of these restaurants. So we'll, we'll sit down, you know, I've talked to Cheryl at Annette's and she wants to, you know, make that space permanent outside, and I'm like, all right, come to the planning board, we'll talk about it. That would need a site plan to make it permanent, but, you know, under the, under the pandemic, we were able to work with these applicants and these restaurants and get it done, you know, the way we, we had to.
Yeah, well, that's Sase's mother invention, and I think that's what these restaurants are going to find out, is they
Agreed.
If they get 25 or 50%,
Look at
They can grow their
Yeah, some of them, Red Room included, has more outdoor seating now than they ever had inside, which is great. You can get in there. And I even see it in some of the, you know, you guys know my other hat, Atlantic City, some of the small shops in AC have been able to do it.
Yeah.
And it's great, they had a great empanada challenge, I don't know if you got to try any of those. I was able to, to try a couple of them and it's, it's just, it's neat.
Yeah, that's, that's the silver lining of the summer, yes.
That's right, agreed.
There's always a silver lining, that's, that's what I was trying to say, I think we had a hell of a summer thus far overall, so.
Yeah, well, let's work on something for next year.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. All right, motion for adjournment, if there's nothing else?
I just want to say thank you to Jim Pakinowski, this is a good session with
Absolutely.
I've got to say, you really nailed it, Jim.
Yeah, good job, Jim. We're going to get the planning board back doing this, doing it this way too, I think.
A combination of Zoom and live has been pretty
I think this is the way we do this from now on.
No question.
Does that mean you guys don't want me in person?
No, you're coming.
That's on you.
The next meeting
It's your pretty face, Mayor.
Thank you, the next meeting, I will be there in the, in the chambers, I promise.
Great.
Motion for adjournment, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, be safe, have a great weekend, everyone, thanks, Tim.